So we're gonna do the public hearing firsthand?
Yeah, why don't we do that and then we'll come back to our.
Okay.
Let's go ahead and call the meeting to order. We have the public hearing for the setting of the 2015 tax levy. I think it's been posted in the paper. Do we have anybody here to speak about the issue? Hearing none. Do we have any discussion?
So we need to close the public comment period.
Okay, close the public comment period.
I'm still catching up. Sorry.
Do you have that? Debbie, you have what we published in the paper there?
Today's Christmas.
Yep, Christmas.
Four months till Christmas. We didn't get to do our public comment period, man. I'm all jacked out of shape here. Jumped right to the public hearing.
Yes, we did. Because it was supposed to start at nine o'clock, by golly. It was posted. We do what Debbie posts.
Glad I wasn't late. Alright.
Any discussion?
What did it, what was it at? Two seven, two seven five?
Two seven oh six. This is Road and Bridge, right?
Two seven oh six. The other ones were gonna be adjusted down because of the underestimate on the tax, sales tax figures, right?
Yes.
Okay. I prefer just to leave it at two seven. Personal preference there.
Okay, well, you can vote me down. I move that we set the tax levy for general revenue at point oh seven five two, and the road and bridge tax levy at point two seven zero six. He's not gonna second it.
I'm not gonna second it, no. Do you wanna make a motion then to?
I'll make a motion. We leave the other ones at the tax rate ceilings and take, leave public works at the point two seven. Is that the motion you needed? Point seven five two and point one oh would be the other ones, right, Debbie?
Yeah, point two seven, four zero, and then the point seven five two, seven two seven.
Yeah. So I'll make a motion. We do that and we leave Road and Bridge at their current rate.
I will second.
Well, the reason that I think that we should set the Road and Bridge tax levy at point two seven zero six is due to the increased costs in repairing our roads and cost of equipment of maintaining those roads. So the minor adjustment is still a reduction in overall tax to the county taxpayer. That's all I have to say.
Yeah, I just, I think we just need to leave it flat. The other ones are dropping, but they're due to the underestimate on the sales tax. So I guess overall, it's dropping anyway. Alrighty. You got anything you wanna add, Mr. Presiding?
No, I second. So we have a motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Pove.
Aye.
Let's go back. We'll go back to our regular agenda. Minutes or reports received and filed?
Um, I have a 2015 tax sale profit list.
Commissioner, committee liaison reports, upcoming meetings and events?
We got ED meeting Thursday, right?
Yep.
We got that on the calendar.
Eleven thirty.
Cap Region's got their Boost BBQ Thursday evening at JC Fairgrounds. Got the Blue Tiger Fest downtown Thursday evening. We're gonna be hopping. Go get dinner and then go downtown, huh? Then we got Leadership Friday morning. Was the radio last?
Last week.
Weekend? Okay.
Yeah.
Um, there's a Hunting for Herald dinner Saturday, too, out at St. Martin's, Knights of Columbus. That's it. Until the next meeting.
You said Leadership Friday morning, right, yeah. We got a YP lunch on Friday, too.
In YPs.
Now they do, we do lunch now with their, yeah, we give them our wisdom.
And get their own.
Okay.
Keep going.
Yeah, we're gonna keep going. Presentation from staff consultants invited guests, Cap Region Medical Center to present On Work Site Wellness.
Morning.
Morning.
I've got a few folders I didn't bring in yet for everyone in the room. I'm Tiffany Rutledge from Cap Region. I know a few faces, a few familiar faces, right? I have a few friends in the room. I wanted to present to you guys this morning on our work site wellness program. In the folders that you guys have, over on the left are a lot of the occupational services of which might be of interest to you. We actually are gonna have an accommodative clinic, occupational health clinic in our expansion that will open up in this fall. But specifically this morning, I was gonna talk to you about our employee wellness program. We really started working a few years ago at Cap Region to expand our wellness offerings. We've been doing biometrics or health fare screenings for several years without really much tie-in or incentives. And once, if you open up your folder into the inside packet, you can see when we started adding in the incentives to our health insurance premiums, we were able to get significant amount more folks involved in our program. So we do the biometrics, we do the HRA. And in 2013, we also added in our wellness coaching, which we were contracting with an outside company to do that. The first year of our program, we put a lot of different things in place. We've got a wellness team, which I know you guys already have, you know, have that in place, have different folks all over your organization. We did Weight Watchers. We have resident clinic that does the OMT manipulation for $5 for our residents. Weight loss competitions, 12-week wellness series. We have a fitness room that's free at Madison. Wellness posters, healthy recipe contest. And then the Fitbit program was something that we started just this year in February. And I really anticipated, or had hoped that we would have 150, 200 people participating in that program. And in the first two months, we had 500. So we're at 575 right now. We have 1,400 employees that are participating in the Fitbit program. So we're monitoring, you know, those results. We have little competitions with it. But our first year, 12 months into the program, in 2013 to 2014, when we really started tying in the health insurance discounts, the premium discounts, and adding the coaching and to the biometrics and HRA, we were able to reduce our health income cost by 120,000. We don't have our latest information out now for 2015 because we're just, we're doing our biometrics right now this month. We'll get our updated information in September and October. But we did last year see a $400,000 reduction in our health claims. So we're very excited about that. Of course, you know, to put the program in place, it does cost money. But we're very happy with what we have been putting in place. And the employees are really turning around and participating. We kind of, we have a pretty comprehensive program. The wellness coaches that we utilize, I was contracting with a company out of St. Louis to help us build our platform. We are going to have our own wellness navigators. We're doing interviewing for those positions right now. We will be using them in-house for our employees starting in October. But then we'll be able to market those services to businesses such as yours in December. So that's kinda what we're looking at. The folder that looks like this is really what our program is, how we utilize it at Cap Region. But this program, the services that we offer, really, they're à la carte. You can add and mix whatever fits best for your organization. We realize that you guys are on your own journey to wellness, just like your individual employees are on their own path. This is something that, a journey that we started. This is where we are. But we realize that not every organization is gonna have the capacity or the folks just aren't quite ready, ready yet. Our folks weren't quite ready when we started it either. But now, you know, we are making strides and people are coming forth and making very significant changes in their life. So we use a couple of partners, like I mentioned, the health coaches we use at a company out of St. Louis. We still work closely with them and will in grooming our wellness navigators. But we also utilize a company called US Health Center. And this modeling that you see inside your folder is actually their product that we use, that we are offering to our clients. And it's a pass-through cost. We market the service along with our biometrics, but it's the same cost that we, that we would pay them and what we pay to use it for their service ourselves. What is so unique to this tool is, do you guys do HRAs now or have you done those with your insurance company at all? So a health risk appraisal helps you identify what risk factors your individuals have, takes into account some family history. And they're, I mean, the product, you know, it's not fault. It doesn't have, I mean, it has some faults to it. People are, can be subjective in how they answer their questions or not be honest. But what this tool does is it looks at the biometric data as well, the lab values and the measurements that you can't manipulate. But it also does predictive modeling. And they've been validated by Intel. And it has a ton of algorithms on the backside, but it really helps pinpoint exactly where this person will be in the next three to five years if they don't make changes in their lifestyle. So even though they may not be hypertensive now, or they may not have diabetes now, they look, it looks at their biometric data, it looks at how they answer those questions on the HRA, and it puts them in this risk. And we actually coach those folks. And we know by looking at our claims data and our pharmacy data, who you, you know, who's using what service or how many people are using it and what our chronic conditions are. We feel like we can make the most difference if we focus on those people who aren't yet diagnosed and help them to make changes in their life before they have the diagnosis. And then we don't end up seeing them on the health plan side. So on the back, it kinda shows you the pricing structure of what we do. The health fare pricing for us to come and do the biometrics is $40 a census member. The price for the US Health Center per person is 44. And a little bit about what you get for that 44 is not just the health risk appraisal, but it provides in the tool, a personal health desk, personal health desktop that they can access 365 days of the year. There's a library of health information and videos. There's trackers that you can track your, if you have incentive programs here that you wanna run. Maybe it is a walking program, or you wanna give them credit for going to Lunch and Learns, or you wanna give them credit for going to 5Ks. It has the capability of tracking all those sort of incentive points inside of there. It looks at a well incentive score. For us at Cap Region, we utilize that well incentive score that you have to get above a 75% on your well incentive score, which is purely biometric driven. And if you don't meet that guideline, then you have to enroll into a coaching program and see a coach. And we like the face-to-face. That was another thing with our, with the coaches that we're using in St. Louis. We got one face-to-face, but then we're using telephonic for the follow-up. And I just don't feel like that is as, as effective as the face-to-face time of a local person who knows, you know, hey, you know, X is on sale at the grocery store this week, or there's a 5K run for your family. And we'll be able to have that capability of having a local person here in those positions. We can do direct mailers to home. I know you guys have employees that aren't just all in one place, they're out in several different locations. And we really have the flexibility even to do biometrics out at different locations, too. So, you know, not all county employees would have to come to one location to do a biometric screening. As we could go out to them and do several. We often, we come early in the morning so that the folks are fasting. We recommend a nine to 12-hour fast. And typically, we set up our health screenings to where we do 10 people every 15 minutes. But we can actually, we can go faster than that. For Jersey Public Schools, since they have so many employees, we usually do 25 people every 15 minutes. So we just double up our, our staff. You know, really, a little bit of background about Cap Region and why we're in the employee health business as well. We've been offering services like this for a very long time. But we also do population health. Population health or community benefit are kind of new terms around in the healthcare market. We're a not-for-profit hospital. We do a community health needs assessment every three years and an implementation strategy. And we do those to meet the recommendation or the requirements by the IRS. We're responsible for a population of people who may never even hit our doors. We may never see them. But for what we do and report to the IRS, they're, they're still our folks. And for me, being responsible for community benefit programs, it's really hard for me to go and put a program in place that's gonna impact 300, 500, 1,000 people at a time. So for me, the best partners are employers, where I can go in and have a captured audience at one place and catch these people before they're running and picking up kids for soccer or second job and, you know, try to do as much that we can while they're at work. So it's a perfect relationship for me to engage employers in being partners to impact population health. I talk really fast. I'm open for questions. I can give you a little more detail on any one of these components. I'm not exactly sure where you guys are in your process for needs, wants. Do you know?
Well, I think we were looking at a health, health risk assessment, and that's what our health department team wanted us to go that route and trying to.
I can talk a little more specifically about that tool.
Okay.
So the, like I said, the tool that we use is through US Health Center. The great thing about the tool is that it can look at cumulative data. So if you start using it, like, we're gonna be on year three at Cap Region this year. So whenever the person goes in there, they can see where they were for the last three years in every one of those metrics. They can print off their lab reports. So anytime that they have a doctor's appointment, if you guys are paying for, you know, these labs to be done once a year, there's no sense in them having them ran again at their doctor's office and paying twice for them. So, you know, we can, we make them available. We make them available through our electronic medical records so that any provider on the Cap Region system can access those lab values. And then their well incentive score, which is the one that just looks at the biometrics and the measurement score. And it comprises of things like blood pressure, resting heart rate, waist-to-hip measurements, body, cotinine, which is nicotine, is another one. If you guys don't currently test for that at any point. We do test for that annually because it's a part of our incentive. We offer $10 per pay period, which we have 26 pay periods in a year, back if they are cotinine-free. So we test that through the blood at the same time that we test the rest of their biometrics. What's interesting, too, is that there's some guidelines through Affordable Care that if you offer those sort of incentives, then that you have to offer an alternate way to earn the incentive should somebody not be able to meet it. So for a smoker, we're gonna have a non-smoking incentive. What are you gonna do for those folks? Well, through the same system where the HRA is, there's actually courses that they could go in and take a smoking cessation class. And you can put guidelines on how quickly they could do it so that they're not just clicking through it all in one setting, that they're clicking through a portion of it a week at a time to make it a true cessation program. And they have those for some other types of incentives. The HRA tool, how we plan to use it and how we use it with our health coaches is our health coaches have access, our, our employees give them permission to look at that. And that is how they build some programs for them. So they know exactly what chronic diseases they have, where they're sitting on the bubble, where they're at high risk. They know what they can see, their lab values, and they set goals right in that same system as well. So we, we keep all of that information there. It's not information that we look at as an organization, but that's the information that is just shared between the coach and between the participant. We open up the tool for the HRA a month at a time to allow everybody opportunity to come in and complete that. I know not, probably not everybody here is comfortable with a computer. We have that as well. So we generally set up a station near HR or near the managers. Our environmental services, you know, sanitation, janitors and the kitchen staff, we have that with them and they help those folks to complete it. But you can generally click through it in 15 minutes, about 15 minutes to complete it. Do you have more specific questions on?
I was just kinda curious. So that health risk assessment, is that something that you do yearly?
We do it annually. We, because we tie it in with our health insurance premiums. We're doing the biometrics now. And then we upload that biometric data into the HRA. You know, confidentially, we transfer that information to the US Health Center's court. And so then when they, when your employee goes to do their HRA, all of their biometric data is loaded in there. They can see all their lab values and they answer their questions. And then that tells us what their insurance premium discounts will be for the next year depending on how that information loads. And they do have the ability to earn their incentive back if they just go to the coaching. So that's their alternate standard of, of changing the discount.
And on wellness, too, is the Healthplex, is that something that we?
It's definitely something that we can do. We have corporate sponsors. The corporate sponsorship is here. Exact pricing isn't listed here, but they do, they do corporate sponsorships depending on how you wanna set it up and how many people. I think it's a little, it's cheaper if you guys do it through your payroll deduct so that it's automatic every time. So they're not having to individually get payment from each individual person. But we have companies who do it both ways. That they get a discount because they have people coming, more than three, I think, is, I think, I think it's only three people. And then there's another discount. And I could get you to the right person to talk about that, but.
We have people all over, Jeff, saying like Christie, you know, it's not safe to really walk along industrial if you're gonna go exercise. Now, we, downtown, it's fun to, it's fun to walk downtown. But, but I know my wife goes to Healthplex at five o'clock in the morning. Not me.
Healthplex is great and they have awesome classes. And, you know, they're looking to even expand to another aerobics room. They've been doing very well with their, their class schedule. And I don't know if that's on here, but I can get you more information, you know, specifically about, about that.
Just to give you an idea, the HRA, they had that when we were with United Healthcare. We have not had it for the last two years. That's where the employees can receive like a $75 gift card if they completed it. And what we received as a company is just a synopsis of all of our employees and what health they were at. We didn't see the details or anything of individual. No, we have not had it for the last two years. And as far as the Healthplex going, we used a payroll deduct for it. And I don't know, it's been four or five years ago that Cap Region come out with, they wanted to EMT it right out of your banking account. So I probably had a handful of people that were on it. So then they took the option to just go ahead and sign up right out of their banking account.
And with our health risk appraisal, the individuals can print off a nice report off of the site. And you do get, as the organization, you get a really nice aggregate report of the data that tells you your percentage of people who are hitting targets. We utilize that data in our programming. Actually, like, sedentariness was overwhelming in our last report, which is why we put in the Fitbit program. We also look at those diagnoses and that's how we determine what Lunch and Learns and topics that we have for our staff. So if we have, you know, a huge amount of people taking medications for sleep, which we are, we shift operate, you know, we run 24 hours, seven days a week. So I am certain that we have people who have sleep issues. Then, you know, we would do Lunch and Learn on sleep. Or we noticed that we have a lot of people taking medications for gut health. So we, you know, we tried to tailor the programming to that HRA data. But we also look at the health claims data and we look at the pharmacy data. And that is something that I would be more than willing to help, you know, look through your information and find a program that's best for your, for your organization.
Okay.
I was gonna share to you, this is, this is our health coaching report for year two. This would be something that we would provide, too, with that service. But this just kinda shows you a little bit about what, what goals were set during the, the health coaching sessions, how many achieved and maintained. And this is year two, so we're pretty happy with, with those results. But I know that you guys probably aren't quite ready for the health coaching piece. If we're gonna just look at the, the HRA tool, but I thought that was interesting to share.
So I guess, you know, as we go forward, I mean, I think, I mean, at least I'm interested in the HRA tool as a way to see where we're at, see where we started, see where we go every year. You know, just to kinda, and then we have to have some kind of incentive to engage our employees into better health. I mean, 'cause better health, reduce our insurance premiums, overall costs us less. So anyway, so I, I mean, I don't know what this health coaching and stuff, I don't know what the costs are on some of that stuff. But so as we, everything has a cost. So it's, and so you weigh your costs versus your potential savings through, you know, your healthcare. And so we've, we've managed our healthcare costs. I think we've done really well over the last two years. And, you know, we're partially self-funded. And so it's, it's great because we haven't had double-digit increases. So, you know, but anything that we can do to either keep our premiums flat or reduce those definitely helps our bottom line.
And that's our goal, too. I mean, we, we were able to keep our health insurance premiums for 2015 just to a 3% increase. And then, you know, really, our, our data came back in for our health claims. It's a little bit delayed and when we have to, you know, come up with, with our premium cost, we saved $400,000, which is, you know, pretty significant for us in two years' time. So that data that comes off of the HRA actually helps figure out a, a risk burden per person. And it goes off the top chronic diseases. So that company has specific ones that can tie some actual money to that. You know, they, they look at hypertensive and back pain, arthritis, you know, some of the, the top. And they will associate a risk burden per person that you can monitor, you know, throughout the years, too, to see where, where you're coming down from that. They're, the company is more than willing to give a demo, too, to their program. So I don't know what format you would want that, but if you guys are interested in doing that, I can set that up with the appropriate, you know, people to do that.
I guess I'd like to see maybe you guys get with our, our health department and see what, I mean, are you guys are working on some type of a program or something, I would assume?
So we actually, as a committee that looks at anything, they come and present to us. And that's how we first met, and that's why she's here today. But at this point, we're kind of waiting to hear, both in your court, per se, to hear how much money we have to play with. I mean, that's really the bottom line at this point to help us move forward. Because we're doing some things right now, the point-of-decision-making prompts, the newsletters, things that don't affect our bottom line. But to move forward, we just want direction from you all.
Okay.
As far as what Cap Region did in the first year, they gave a $50 incentive for everybody who took the HRA.
Yes.
And then door prices for bio.
Right, so we have been doing biometrics for years. We didn't call them biometrics. We call them health fares, health screenings. We've been doing them forever. You know, that's kind of what we do. That's our business. We've been doing them forever, you know, that's kind of what we do, that's our business. We've been doing them for a long time. So we added the HRA in a few years back through our TPA. We're self-funded and it was fifty dollars, so we gave folks a fifty dollar discount. And that got a few more people in the door, you know, when you're looking at the numbers. You know, they, they did increase for that fifty bucks, but not immensely. What, what more than doubled our numbers was when we started tying it to their health insurance premiums. And then folks are, they don't want this out.
How much currently do employees pay for their health insurance?
Roughly?
Hun, I, for me, my family, I pay three hundred dollars a month.
For your whole family?
For my whole family.
And how many dependents is that?
This is really getting personal. My husband and two children, it's around three hundred dollars.
That's awesome.
And so our health insurance, our health insurance discounts, what we do is we do twenty dollars. The ten dollar smoking or codeine, it's codeine, so it's not just smoking. It's also chew and even patches. If you're, or a heavy patch user can come up positive for a codeine. But we don't hire smokers at Capital, we don't hire people with positive codeine. So we do that and that's ten dollars. We get paid twenty-six times a year. So every other week we do ten dollars for a yearly total of two hundred and sixty dollars if you do not use codeine. On top of that discount, if you participate in the biometrics and the HRA and you go see a coach one time to review your results, cause we don't want people using them in lieu of, of a doctor. We wanna make sure that they are following up with the doctor, wanna make sure they understand what they are. So they go and meet with a coach one time. If they do that and everything looks well, then they get another twenty dollars per pay period for participating in that. If their biometric, their well incentive score is below seventy-five or they are high risk, and I, it's a little more complicated than I'm saying. And they enroll in a coaching program December through June. And they have, they have to go see a coach four additional times. And once they do that, we give them a rebate check back for the incentives that they lost January through June. And then they start getting the discount the rest of the year. That is a process that we did because of our HR, of our payroll system. It was the easiest. You may have a payroll system that is much easier to manipulate. Or may not.
Yeah.
Well, we just got a new system too. I did not realize, you know, how much those people are gonna hate me for doing these sort of things. But I can work, I can work with you on, you know, lessons learned for us and how, how we tie them and how we time them. And I don't know when your open enrollment period is, but you need to have your decisions made and stuff written before all that. So there's a lot of timing that goes into this and how you can utilize that. And I'm more than happy to work with you on, on what we did.
And I mean, we are blessed here because the employee's whole cost is covered by the county. Now the dependents obviously are not. We don't subsidize as well, just Capital Region. So it has to be something different than a reduction on a premium because again, the employee doesn't pay anything for that.
And that's what worked for us and I, we realized that your incentives may look differently. My point is, is it really started to become insignificant to them when there was some money tied to it. Which is sad that we, but it's just kinda the way it is. And we're finding that for community programs. We have a grant that we run through at Eldon, Healthy Community, Police Schools, Healthy Community Grant. We can't get the families to participate unless we pay them. We have to pay them to get them in the door, but we offered a summer pass to the swimming pool and those people showed up by golly. And, and you know, they did come, but to just offer it, I think we're so busy that people just don't take the time.
So how many FTEs do we have? Are we wanting to do this another day or?
I think we need to sit down and kind of figure out how best we, I know I'm on the board, I can't do.
You can talk about health assessment. You don't have to say where it comes from.
In a generic bag.
Right.
I say do it a different day so we can regurgitate or.
Well, I think, I think we need to work with health department and you and, and figure out.
You know, for us, because we're using the health insurance, I don't know if there's some way that you can find that to work. Because the people who aren't participating are helping to fund the program for us. You know, those who, that we're not happy to pray. And we have some that just don't want to participate, don't trust the system, don't want other people knowing. And you know, that's, that's their right too, but they do, and those smo, and the smokers, frankly, they're helping, quite helping to pay for the discount for those that don't.
Okay, so I appreciate all the information and maybe we'll be in touch, so yeah.
There's lots of questions and believe me, we didn't, we didn't make it happen overnight.
I'm sure.
So I don't anticipate that you guys will either. I appreciate the opportunity.
Thank you very much. Okay, we're gonna keep moving. Co-County Hazardous Mitigation Plan Update.
Let's head.
Got a lot.
Good morning, everyone.
Hi, Ed.
Most of you know me. My name's Ed Segman, Regional Planning Commissioner. And I'm here and I'll be brief. Today I wanted to just, to make sure you guys were aware of an activity. And to get your blessing to move forward. And then at a later meeting, you, you will need to go ahead and sign our agreement that goes within our, our contract. So I'm gonna take the next three hours and go through this planning with you all. Melissa, you wanna start on the first check? No, here's, 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 here's a down and dirty overview. Local governments are required to have mitigation plans in place. And it's a tool, that planning process is, is really a good tool to go through and try to identify where are some, some issues that we need to be thinking about. It may be a floodplain area, it may be a community safety. So there is some value in that, in that planning process. Your plan is required to be updated every five years. It's required to be current. Your plan is current and it's due to be updated this November of 2016. So we're ahead of the curve. But what we want to do is to get your, I want you to make aware that we're gonna be starting the process. It's all right with you all. And we're gonna take September and talk to the cities and school districts about participating. And then we'll start the planning process sometime in October of this year. We would like to have a county commissioner sit in on a lot of the planning meetings. I think it's beneficial for you guys to sit in on those meetings. The last go-around, Larry and Bill, I know participated, I don't know if you did or not. But, but we've, we've been engaged now with a lot of the different departments down here. And so we would like to, we'll suggest some of those folks to participate. The local Jeff City and all the towns will participate in the school districts, so.
And we also pull in sewer, water districts, fire district everybody last time.
If we, yeah, so it's a, it's a pretty good planning process. Susan, just, Susan Galiotta that works with me, we just finished Boone County's plan. That plan, this, this plan is what's called an all hazards plan, excuse me, natural hazards plan. The Boone County plan is an all hazards plan. And you all may be receptive to, to doing that type of instrument where we look at man-made threats that, that should be considered. We contract, here's how the money works. We contract with SEMA. SEMA's contracted with regional planning commissions to do these plans statewide. So we have a contract with SEMA to do the plan. But the local governments in us are required to provide a match, a twenty percent match. And that match, we've, we've always been able to do it per in-kind participation. So if folks participate in the planning process, there's no cost. And we've, we've completed with updates, maybe now, let's see, twelve, thirteen plans. And we have not, we've been able to meet our in-kind match with, with all those planning processes. So I don't anticipate a cost to you all. I'm gonna leave you with a copy of the contract between SEMA and us. And then Exhibit D, which is your agreement for us to do the planning, be the consultant on this project, on the project. Are you following me? So don't need to prove today, but at some point in time I will contact you all and say, hey, we need to get the contract. But Exhibit D is where your authority comes in. Questions, questions? I could, I mean, I could, I mean, if you all want at some point in time, if you wanna get into the weeds a little bit more about what's in the plan, there's a lot of information in this plan. We'd be glad to come down and, and, and provide that. I don't think this is a good one for me to go through all these issues today.
No, I don't need it.
You have one.
I know Larry wants me to.
You don't have one when you're on your own. You don't know where it's at.
That's Bill's.
Right.
It's holding up the desk.
Billy, you have anything you wanna add?
No, I just say a lot of this actually goes back to these federal programs too. A lot of that look at is non-hazard mitigation, there's no dollar available for any reimbursement. So it's very important that we include everybody that we can within the county. And we had great participation in 2011. I mean, St. Martin's and Tales, Wardville, Center County, everybody was there from the small communities, Russellville, all of them. So it was a good turnout, water districts, fire districts, anything that can help the county as far as mitigation or anything. So some of the things we're looking at right now, maybe on the roads that we've had, we might be able to implement that in as well too, so pretty important.
Susan, what I forget, anything you wanna add?
I think we've got it all?
Sure.
Long process, but it's, it's good.
Well, just let Jill look at Exhibit D before we put it on the agenda prior to that. And then I nominate Sam to go to all them meetings. I don't think it's bad that all of us are invited to them though.
Well, city's there, I mean, their public works folks are there. I mean, it's just a double-faced city-county, so it's great, great to have that.
And if I can't make it, then I'll nominate Jeff to be my.
No, I think we nominate you.
Well, I'll try to go. If I can't, then Jeff will be my surrogate.
Maybe you can drop by for a couple, that'd be great. But the last time we did it was, we did Costa County a penny, so.
We like that.
Everybody comes in, sets a meeting, they sign in and those hours are all towards soft max.
Great.
Anything else?
Nope. Thank you.
Thanks, Ed.
Thank you. Okay, unfinished business, sale of county property.
So we had talked about this a long, long time ago about all the properties that we have. And we've kinda, we've never really gone anywhere with it. And now that the litigation for Rens Lake is over, I'd like to go ahead and proceed with selling all of the properties that we had listed. Whether that be by courthouse steps or sealed bid.
Which way are you wanting to do it?
Well, I'm, I'm open to either, so. I mean, we, we reserve the right to reject any, I mean, if you wanna do by sealed bid, you know, we could reserve the right to reject any and all bids, so. But I'd just like to get a list and publish it in the paper and go forward.
What criteria do we have to do on sealed bids if we wanna reject it? Can we reject it just cause we like somebody better or? I'm not being funny here, but on the Rens Lake one, that's gonna be something that I made to hold off on that one if nothing else. So I can let them know that we're done with the lawsuit if they wanna proceed with something.
Well, and so I guess where I'm at on that is, is I understand where you're coming from. But by the time we publish this and by the time we take bids, we're probably looking at sixty days, I would assume.
Yeah, Jennifer's the one that called me.
Right, so I mean, we have to advertise for bids, how long do we have to advertise for bids on typical project?
I think on sale of property, there's any requirements that it runs for so long. You normally with like surplus property, we only run it at once.
Right.
Can we just put a for sale sign in it and just say, bring us an offer and we treat it that way until we find one we find acceptable?
Yes.
Cause if somebody.
Okay, the law's very broad. It basically says the commission controls county property and buy and sell county property. It doesn't micromanage your procedures. So that's up to you. On the other hand, one thing you probably do wanna keep in mind though, is what is going to be in the best interest of the county as far as how you're gonna sell this and how much you're gonna take and, and that considerations in that area. And it may very well be the Rens Lake, say if they put together a neighborhood district would be in the best interest of the county as a whole.
Yeah, and that won't happen in sixty days, so that's where.
Are they, you've talked a little bit to them, are, are some of them interested?
I've kept in touch with them, but you have sixty homes out there or whatever and trying to get everybody on one page is not gonna happen overnight. Or give the options is not gonna happen overnight. But if we're gonna pursue it, then at least give them the option and bring some kind of action forward. So I'm fine with moving ahead on the other ones, but I'd like to just hold up on, on that one for now and proceed.
So what, what do you need till the end of the year?
I don't know, I'll talk to them, find out what they're.
Yeah, I didn't realize Julie Smith.
I mean, that's, that's the one that's costing us the most. I mean, that's the one that's, that's truly costing us a lot to maintain.
What are we doing out there?
We got all kinds of grass to mow.
So you can't sell some of them and then hold off on Rens Lake like Jeff said.
Right.
Pretty discretionary on a part of the nation.
We can move on all the other ones. I'm gonna vote no on Rens Lake today though, so. And then we need to figure out how we wanna go about it. Do we just wanna put a, a listing out there and say for sale, bring us an offer?
Can you put different dates on, do, on every, Rens Lake put a bids due by October thirty-first for?
We can put it up for sale today if you two say you wanna put it up for sale today and go that way.
Well, I'm, I'm, I feel like the, the property owners out there have a lot at stake. So I think what, what we do to them is.
I, I agree with that statement, but at the same time, you know, we've been dealing with this for a long time. And they need to get their stuff together and they need to, you know, if they wanna do something, then, then let's, you know, and get it together and do it. I mean, or.
It's easy to say, none of us were here when we took it over, none of us here voted to take it over, so. I, I don't disagree on that, but I also wanna give them a fair shake to pull something together. And it's not gonna happen overnight. We have had it for, what, eight years, seven years, something like that, so.
So I mean, if they, if they have some kind of a, if they even have some kind of a plan as to what they wanna do, I mean, we could entertain that. But you know, if you can't come up with a plan, you sure aren't gonna come up with homeowners that are gonna say okay or form a homeowner's association. And I, I mean, I don't know who's leading the charge out there, but.
If you live out there and the property was taken over by the county, whether right or wrong. And you can either have it right now the way it is growing back into wetlands. Or you can let somebody sell it and it becomes storage sheds. And I'm just using as example, or a, I don't know, a welding shop or.
Right.
Auto repair shop, the Stephen mix there. What are you gonna want done there?
Well, if it's my property, I'm gonna try to protect it in whatever way I, means I can. You know, but I want some of that in my backyard, well, maybe I'd buy it, you know? I mean, yeah, do I gotta mow it, do I gotta maintain it? Yeah, but what's the alternative? You know, somebody putting a bunch of storage sheds back there or?
If we put it out for bid, what are we looking at? Give it them like sixty days or thirty days or?
We can do whatever we want. So, I mean, that's why I was, you know, if that one's for the end of the year, but I mean, and I don't really care if it goes beyond that because So, I mean, that's why I was, you know, if that one's for the end of the year, but I mean, and I don't really care if it goes beyond that, because at the end of October, you're gonna quit mowing, right? So, but, you know, prior to next year, March, you know, I'd like to see something done there so that we don't have to maintain it for another year. And so until you give people deadlines, people will drag their feet and they won't get anything done.
I can have Jennifer come up with a RFP to put these properties out, listing all of them, come out. I think you probably should go that route because of, we have to transfer deeds to the property and everything else, so we need to put that all out there. Let her get it together and let you guys see it before she puts it out, and maybe we can have a sixty, ninety day clause on that before they're due. That's up to you.
Well, maybe if you do that, then maybe that'll get the people at Rens Lake to kinda say, hey, we gotta do something now. And if they come back to us and say, hey, we're working on trying to create a, a home association, then maybe we can do something with them. Yeah, do something with them, I don't know.
I think you definitely need to give them some sort of timeline that they're required to submit something by a certain point.
You can't pick and choose bids.
Okay.
So if you think that there's gonna be a situation where they're gonna need more time, then I would suggest not bidding Rens Lake out at all.
Right.
But you can't just get the bids in and say, you know, somebody else has bid, let them out, and they can't get it together, you can't just pull it in order to favor them, because there's no point in, in a competitive bid in the first place, because it's no longer competitive, because you're favoring one particular entity. Does that make sense?
Mm-hmm.
And the RFP process is what I was thinking about. Hold on, that'd be four, one, two.
I think you'd be better doing a deadline for them to submit a plan for Rens Lake, and at that point, if they don't have a plan prepared or you don't agree with their plan, then you could go out to bid on that property, but...
Do it separately. So Jeff, would you be okay to put the other properties up for sale, and then we'll just talk to Rens, tell them we've gotta do something?
But they were kinda told not to do anything with it, because we couldn't do anything with it because it was a lawsuit, so we can't come here and say, oh, now y'all got...
But now that it's done, we can maybe...
Well, they didn't make the bid and we're making them sleep in.
Motivate them to...
You just need to decide what a, a fair amount of time to allow them to come up with a plan. Is it sixty days, is it a hundred or twenty days?
I'd come up with a plan in about five minutes. Now, does it hold any water? I don't know, so.
The damn plan.
Yeah.
The damn plan. All right, we got a name for it. All right, but in all seriousness, I agree that putting a time limit on it makes them act, but...
Get serious.
Uh-huh.
Okay.
I mean, you often put...
You wanna make a motion to put all our other properties?
What all do we have? Let's, I mean, we, I think we need to list all of them and say exactly what they are, because otherwise, we're gonna be selling the courthouse.
We don't have to do windows, then.
God, you're such a positive person, Sam.
I'll have Jennifer work with Larry and then...
Yeah, with Larry and Larry, and then can we bring that back next week, and then we'll, we'll put the others up for sale, and then maybe we'll set a timeline for Rens Lake.
And I'll find out if we even need to.
Okay.
I, I just emailed him and said, hey, chomping at the bit to get rid of them, let's see if we got a plan, if not, then we move on, so. I don't disagree, go ahead and get rid of them, they are costing us money, so. Larry Ben's Memorial Lake is no longer in talks.
Oh, it's Larry Bishop.
Clean out any culverts, Larry?
No.
Maybe in Taos?
Not yet.
Okay. So we will do that. Sheriff left, did he have something he had to do by nine, by ten o'clock?
Yeah.
Okay, are you, you here to...
I'm here to answer any questions you might have about the Accurate Controls contract renewal.
Okay, well, we'll just keep going down our...
Did we already approve that? We just have the contract? Is that where we're at, or you were skipping around to get to the show?
Well, I'm just skipping around, we did, yeah, we did sale of county property, we've done a hearing, so. Now we're on accounts payable, I would, well, no, Greg had just said he had to, something he'd like to be on the agenda before ten a.m., but he's gone, so...
There was no accounts payable.
No accounts payable. Okay, second and final reading of budget adjustment number eleven.
Okay, that is for eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars, that's for the grant for the juvenile center for the family court justice program system. So today's the final reading, so are you needing a motion?
How much was it for?
Eight thousand nine hundred and twenty dollars.
And what was the adjustment for?
It's a grant.
Okay.
Money in, money out, right. I make a motion, we accept a...
The grant thingy. Budget adjustment number eleven.
Budget adjustment number eleven.
Number eleven.
The second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
The grant thingy. I like that one. Lynn, can you get that in the notes that way?
Health Department MOU with DHSS.
The grant thingy.
Good morning. This is the memorandum of understanding that we need to have with the Department of Health and Senior Services so we can have access to the state data center to be able to print death and birth certificates.
You already saw that, too, Jill?
Yes.
I'll make a motion to re-sign the Health Department's MOU with the KEW, with the DHSS.
I don't know what, okay.
I just forgot it.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we have county clerk to discuss storage issues.
Yes, we have issues.
You do?
You know, we rent the rooms across the hall from our building, from Dawson. We have three rooms over there. We cleaned out one, sent a bunch of storage out to Southridge, Phil Farber was nice enough to store some of our excess equipment, so we downsized, went to two rooms. There's really no place to go, talked to Greg Camp, there's nowhere else to put our equipment, so we're just kinda looking for help. Maybe you guys can pick up the rent bill. The money we're using comes out of our HOBA fees, and it is designed to, for replacement equipment. We talked about replacement equipment earlier in the year, as far as our elections go, maybe putting some money back for that. Well, the fees we collect to pay the storage is actually what that's supposed to be for, is to, for replacement equipment and stuff, but we have to use it for our rent. So I didn't know if there was, you know, I don't know of any place around here we can put it, so. I'm just asking, maybe y'all can pick up the ticket for the rent, and then we can start saving the money for the new machines. Decide you don't wanna do that, then we'll just keep using our money for the rent, I guess.
How much storage space are we talking about? What square footage did you have?
There's two rooms, and they're probably twenty by twenty, and that gives us just enough room to roll the machines out, test them, put them off to the side, roll another one out. You know, there's thirty-six optical scan machines, and there's thirty-six DREs in there, so each one has to be tested during the federal election.
And then what, were we paying for rent?
Well, we weren't paying seven hundred and seventy-five dollars a month. We cut down the small room, which they added a hundred and twenty-five when they added it all a few years ago, so I'm assuming, we haven't got a new lease yet from Mr. Dawson, but I'm assuming it's gonna be around six fifty a month.
Okay, I saw some emails going back and forth about, did, we talked to the sheriff, do they have any space over there? We got a whole interstitial...
We can't use...
Sheriff, why don't you, Jill said you can't go in.
Yes, you can, why not?
Because it's, it's limited to the language that was in the ballot.
If we rent that space from the sheriff's department, we can do that.
Well, I don't know, maybe. I'm just saying, we litigated this, and the courts interpreted that ballot language. So is it if we rented, is it still being used as a law enforcement purpose?
I think as long as law enforcement is gaining the revenue from it, they could...
And there's that argument, and we discussed that before. I know Mark didn't like that idea, but it's a different commission.
I don't mind getting sued, so. Well, in all seriousness, though, we've talked about it before, and we've got this space that's sitting there empty, and we get beat up about that. So if it was being used to at least for storage for now, if it's not being used for anything, if it has access...
So what you got to do is shift the money from one fund to the other.
Right. We would actually write a check from either the HOBA fund or from general revenue to the law enforcement fund, so...
You know, I guess, are you talking about the spare floor that they have?
Yes.
Have y'all, have y'all seen that? I mean, like, there's restrooms, there's no, we have to have a place that's heated and cooled and secure, that's locked down so nobody can get to our equipment. Once we test it, we can't have...
I'm hoping that that building's locked down. It should be locked down.
Well, I know, but I don't know who, what the officer, the sheriff's department has access to the room, and can we just go access? Can I just walk over there and go back there anytime I want, you know? Because we go back regularly to turn on our machines, the batteries have to be charged, so we go over every three months, turn on the machine so that they charge it, we have to go back a couple days later and turn it off. And then all the machines have to be taken out and loaded. You know, are they gonna let us sit out there with a loading truck for an hour, two hours, and load equipment out of front of their building?
Sure, they're nice.
They're nice.
They're in.
They're, it's out the side of the building, I mean, it's be off the street.
Are you talking about the room off to the right side then, as you're facing the building, or are you talking about...
There's a, there's a...
The only entrance, the only reasonable entrance to load and unload is off of Adam Street. There's a, a walk-through door there, but that room is not heated, it's not cooled, and there is no electricity in it for plugins on a regular basis around the room. So it's just basically a, it's a rough...
The floor is not level or intact, I mean, it's just, you know, there's not, you'd have to build something, and then it'd have to be fenced off. Because our workers come and test the machines, so we have five or six people in there for maybe four hours on just a regular election, on a federal election, we have to test all machines, takes us about eight hours. So, you know, those guys in there work, and they have to have air conditioning cool, and they have to have heat, and they have to have restrooms.
So what kind of space do we have out at ESB that we could store those machines in?
I don't know, we, we don't have anything that big. I mean, Steve, if you ever look, where's the pallet rack, right? There's nothing.
That's not air conditioned either, it's not secure.
What does it have to be maintained? It don't have to be air conditioned at sixty-five degrees or something, does it?
You got people that are sitting there testing machines, like Marvin Register and other people that we hired to come and do it, so I don't think we're gonna need any help.
Well, we have a...
In August, if it's a hundred degrees outside, we don't have an air conditioning room.
We have a huge conference room there, right?
Oh, the training room?
Yeah.
Turns where we could put them, if we put them on the racks, we'd have to get them out four foot away.
I'm not saying that they'd be there permanently, but I mean, you know, if we needed to test machines, we couldn't take those machines into that training room and test them in there.
I guess they roll out, I'm not really looked at that much, that I'm not familiar with.
I know, that'd be quite a hassle to roll all those machines.
What, what are we storing over in the basement of the Carnegie Building? I mean, Greg's, Greg's not here, but I mean, that was, that was, that was off.
Air conditioner did not work there. He said that they decided not to fix the air conditioner on the basement, they fixed it on the first two floors. So it's not air conditioned either, it's not climate controlled.
They got all the stuff for y'all, and we got there.
I've looked at it some time, but then we said they didn't have...
We can get a fan on testing the machines. It's not that bad downstairs, it's not gonna be that bad in that interstitial level of the jail.
We, we have the, we have the whole area where EMS was that could be used. I mean, we may have to do some work there, but, you know, for six hundred and fifty dollars a month, we could stand to spend a little bit of money to, to fix up an area.
About the back part with the rock stores and stuff? Yeah, they'd have to clean a lot of the stuff out, or...
I mean, you're talking, you had an area that was four hundred square feet, or eight hundred square feet, maybe.
They're probably twenty by twenty, and then that's, you know, gives us plenty to roll them out and test them and put them back, and it's easily accessible for us, you know? We can send a couple girls over, and if they get done with it, they can come back to work, or if we have to carpool out there, well, then we're kinda stuck out there, if we forget something, we have to drive back across town.
Well, me and your, the former clerk didn't see eye to eye on this either, and I mean, I mean, if it was my money and I was spending it, I'd, you know, if I could save seven hundred and seventy-five dollars a month, I, I think that's, I mean, that's eight thousand dollars a year or something. I mean, that's, that's a lot of money, so, you know, if we have a little bit of inconvenience for eight thousand dollars, I think it's well worth it, but, you know, I, I mean, I, I don't do it, so I can't tell you how to do your job, but I mean, you know.
It's quite busy, you know, because we have to test the machines before election and have to test them after, and they have to be all set up, and we have plugins and everything all over the room, we can plug them all in, I don't know, it's complicated.
We've got to load in and load out for election, too.
Right, so in the Carnegie Building, you know, if they have to load all the machines and all the supply boxes, then you probably talk to block in the alley for an hour with a moving truck to load one room, and then the next truck would come in, block the alley for an hour, load his truck. They couldn't do it at the same time. Over here, across the street, we have a loading dock on the back, and you back both trucks up, the loading dock's big enough where you have two drives, so they can both load at the same time and unload at the same time. I mean, I think we'd get a lot of complaints in the alley if we tried to block the alley for a couple hours. You wouldn't be able to get in the parking places, we wouldn't be able to get through it.
What, the alley back here?
Yeah, the Carnegie Building. If they put it in the basement, we'd have to roll all our machines out and get them in there, put them on the ramp and the, and the moving truck, it's twenty-two foot moving trucks.
What other storage places do we have to use?
How do you get these machines out of these buildings over here at ground level and load them into your truck?
There's a loading dock on the back of Dawson's building, there's two loading docks, we can back, back both trucks up to the loading dock, there's two alleys there, and they can both load at the same time. Same way with unloading, they come back and unload, and then they just, they don't even have to put the ramp out or anything, they just roll them right out and put them back in the rooms, really.
So, so are you looking for more space over there, or, or what?
No, we actually downsized to just two rooms.
So the lease is up, and that we're just renewing, they're asking us to renew the lease?
It's just a continuous lease, so I, I've shrunk it down to the two rooms, it's gonna be probably around six hundred and fifty dollars a month. So we use it for, you know, we're paying out of our HOBA fees, which is designed for new equipment, so basically, if you guys wanted to assume the rent, then we would start saving money for new equipment. If you don't, then we'll keep, keep paying.
So we're on a month, we're, we're on a month layer.
Is the old jail a possibility on the upper floors?
Greg told me that's a roof leak. And then somebody said you couldn't get out of this building without, that you couldn't get out without steps, so you'd have to take all those machines down the elevator. I went up and looked on the third floor where the visitor center was, and if you took the walls out, sure, there's plenty of space there. It wasn't air conditioned, it was hot up there, and then Greg said the roof leaked, and then how, how do you get them all, all out of the building? And you're talking seventy-two machines, and I'm not sure.
So we either gotta keep renting what we have now, and you're asking for it to come out general revenue rather than out of HOBA fees? Is HOBA fees empty, done, or whatever?
There's HOBA fees like we put in, there's some money in there yet, and we get every, like, the federal election and the municipal election, they actually pay us rental on our equipment, which goes into that fund. So we're, we're not gonna run out of money.
Okay, that's kinda where I was going with this, Steve, is I thought that the room rental was part of the fees that were paid for, the machines from each of the political entities that have some on the ballot and stuff, right?
True, that's where we get the money from. It can be used for that, it can be used for...
Doesn't pay for all of it, because we have our own stuff on the ballot, obviously.
Right, now, the county has to pay for the August and November election, so we can't charge any fees to the county because it's your equipment. But, you know, during the municipal election, municipal election, and the federal election, we charge a hundred dollars rental on our machines, so we get thirty-five hundred dollars, which we put in as HOBA fees, which we use to pay for rent, which is mostly designed for replacement equipment. Supposed to charge, and then as your equipment wears, you, you know, you have this money saved up, so if we can continue to do that, it's down the road, and when we need equipment, then we'll be...
Well, right now, we're on a month to month, so we could, we could just extend that, and in the meantime, keep looking, keep looking and see if we can come up with some other options.
Yeah, we, it's not, is there no deadline on it? I just wanna bring it to your attention, if you find it, and if you can't find it, please.
Yeah, I got just the information, we've got that big thirty by thirty walk-in cooler right there by the dock door. With health, too, that might be something to look at. I mean, we don't really use it unless it's a masculinity war or a health issue.
Let's look at some stuff.
It's right by the dock door, that might be something.
Yeah, I think we still need to look. Let's look at it.
It's definitely cool in the wintertime and a little warm in the summer, but we got a big fan, electric heater, so there's plug-ins in there, I mean, it's huge.
Well, you got a generator, right? We can hook up an air conditioner.
Oh, it, it operates.
You can plug in air conditioning.
Turn the cooler on and hang beef.
In a disaster, we just have to move stuff out. In a disaster, we just have to move stuff out. But, I mean, it's, it's sitting there, if you wanna look at Steve, I mean, that's you, we're doing a live later. I just got things, big pallet room would get pretty big for what they need, but, that other room, we might look at that, but you'd run a power strip through there, the electric's already inside.
We need to make a decision by the end of the year.
You'd have to lock the doors.
Yeah, we, we pull the door down, you got the toes, we got the toes, so it's all gonna be your people, our people gets in, it's got an alarm, alarms just going.
Okay, maybe take a look at that and see.
You know, the other thing is that they, when they haul up the equipment after an election, they're there, you know?
Yeah.
I mean, you'll be there, I guess.
Yeah, we'll get, we'll get them coached to the building, no problem.
And we got dock doors right there too, so.
You can back right in, two dock doors.
I just don't think that, that's six hundred and fifty dollars a month, I think that's, I think it's ridiculous for storage, and we didn't have any save about it when it was coming out of the HAVA funds, so if it's gonna come out
We just charge half revenue, but that was my budget. No, you're more, you wanna come out and look, we'll take a look at that, if that's something.
I think we need to.
Yeah, let's take a look.
Let's look at some options.
Yeah.
So, but it, I mean, I agree, it needs to be something that's accessible, I don't think the old jail, seventy-two machines or twenty machines trying to bring it up and down the elevators
Can't get them in around here.
Would be a real pain. I'm not saying it's gotta be air conditioned at, you know, seventy-two degrees either. Keep it a little warm, they'll work faster, they'll
Has to be comfortable, cause we do August, you know, we have to test them in August, so it can be
Just thoughts.
Okay, okay.
More stuff on the list.
And Mike left, didn't he? Signing the surplus remount title for EMS?
This is the vehicle that's gonna go get remounted.
Is that why Mike was here? I like when you look at some of these things on the agenda, we don't have somebody that's gotta be here for them, if we can move them to the top, like for the sheriff, for the public works, or, well, I know, but any of it, like signing of a title, we can put way down to bottom, so we don't have to have anybody here to talk about it with, we can just do housekeeping stuff, so. If he always wants to be first.
I move we sign this surplus title for EMS for remount.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of agreement with Vietnam Memorial.
I move we sign the agreement for the Vietnam Memorial.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, we're moving right along. Signing the amendment agreement for the brain injury grant.
Could you run?
So, we signed that contract a couple months ago, and apparently they just put out an amendment that changed the forms that we have to submit with our monthly, monthly invoice. It didn't change, change any of the requirements of the grant or the money of the grant, just the form, so.
Just saw it and everything.
Just saw it.
Yep.
I move we sign the amendment for the brain injury grant agreement.
Second.
Alright, we're moving him along.
Okay.
All in favor?
All in favor?
Aye.
Signing of the twenty fifteen Bulletproof Fest Grant.
We are awarded five thousand six hundred sixty-three dollars and nineteen cents for Bulletproof Fest Grant, it is a fifty percent match.
I move we sign the Bulletproof Fest Grant Award Agreement, or Contract, sorry.
Second, and we had in the budget, right, the other fifty percent, or where's that coming from?
That comes out of our law enforcement. No, we budget for it, we budget for it every year.
Okay, so it is budgeted for every year and assuming we get the grant, okay. We had a motion in a second, Sam.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Didn't know if you followed us on that.
This one just says auditor. Okay. Signing of the, signing of Maintenance and Service Agreement with Accurate Controls. Anywhere?
Here's Accurate Controls on, oh, that's yours.
There you are. Okay. Did we
No, we're on Accurate Controls, so.
Oh, okay, Accurate.
What we got here, Victor?
Accurate Controls is a company out of Wisconsin, they do all of our maintenance for the security electronic system for the old sheriff's department building. That includes all your security doors, camera systems, the DVRs, the locks on all the doors in the jail, the intercom systems, all of that, that operates all that security equipment.
So Sally Port and
Sally Port, yeah, now that, now, depending on the piece of equipment, for instance, a lock in a jail door, this contract covers up to the pigtail that plugs into that hardware. If it's an electronic piece of equipment like a camera or an intercom, then that's actually included in the grant. We have heavily used this maintenance contract to replace control center computers, monitors. They come down and do an annual, or four times a year, we do a maintenance visit that lasts about two days, where we go through the system and try and fix things ahead of time. But it's a very, it's a very detailed system, it's like a spider web that goes through the whole building.
Does that take real
So, only question I got is, I know you had a couple of issues where, you know, you had to break out the keys and everything else, was that an issue with Accurate Controls, or?
The, one of, one of the issues was a, well, these are basically a glorified computer system. So, we have, one of the issues was a hardware motherboard issue that failed, and the maintenance contract allowed us to replace about a six thousand dollar piece of computer equipment for nothing, and then they went and repaired the old computer and sent it to us, so if it ever happened again, we have the old one sitting there, we can just switch them out, so they're programmed exactly alike. And then the other issue was a communication failure, basically, we have fiber optic hubs that connect all the three security electronic rooms and, by fiber optic, and those hubs kinda hiccuped, so it's kinda like they got blocked, so we had to go through and reset those systems, reboot them, might say, for lack of a better word. So that one actually wasn't a maintenance or equipment failure issue, that was more of a, of a program or software issue.
Okay, this was a budgeted item?
This is budgeted, yes.
I move we sign the Maintenance and Service Agreement with Accurate Controls.
I'm gonna second, I got questions too.
Do you? Sorry.
No, I'm generally fine with staying with them, but who else can work on it?
Well, the problem with the, a lot of the system, as far as like the hardware, the speakers, the wiring, the relay systems, the PLCs, all of that stuff is fairly open architecture, so there's a lot of companies that could do hardware stuff. The problem is, is the system that was bid and went in is a software proprietary issue. So if we have a software issue or something with the system when it comes to setting up that software or operating that software, it's Accurate Control owned.
So they got us
So, we're kinda stuck between a rock and a hard place, unless at some point we go out to bid for a new actual operating system itself, where we keep, we use the same hardware, but we have a new, a different operating system installed.
Alright, well, Chris is usually the one that's hard on the service contracts, and he lets y'all off easy. I don't know, I was just looking at some of their billing stuff, and it's what they're gonna charge us per hour if we don't sign it. I'd proceed by going back to school and learning how to do that stuff, cause if it's a hundred and sixty-two dollars an hour, it'd be worth it, I, I don't know. I understand your frustrations. Okay.
Yeah, for a technician that's getting paid fifteen.
Yeah, I'm just gonna stop.
Yep.
Have them try out.
Okay, we had a motion, you second?
Yeah, he did.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Are we looking at anything different over there with, cause we're changing all this other security stuff?
Am I the client?
I'm sorry?
Yeah, I don't, I mean, I guess we could at some point, but that would be a big
For the security electronics?
Yeah.
Well, reality is, is, is the, these computer systems that run this system are, as you know, it's not so much their system that changes, it's the base operating system like Windows, and as Windows progresses, there's gonna come a point in time that these computers aren't gonna be able to be maintained anymore, because either Microsoft isn't supporting the software or whatever, the base software. There's gonna come a point in time when we're probably gonna have to go out to bid to rebid not the hardware, but the software portion of it. And there are other companies that do provide that type of software that would integrate with the hardware that's already there.
Yeah, I think that'd be another discussion, another time, but.
Alright, okay.
Assessor copier lease.
Assessor's copier lease agreement.
Just cleaning up that mess.
Yeah, this is the agreement that the assessor signed to lease a copier without having the commission sign it and without having the auditor attest to it, and Chris said he has doctor's appointment today, so I told him I'd just go ahead and give it to you.
He has dysentery.
He did tell us that. Okay, anyway.
He's got a doctor's appointment every day, doesn't he?
Well, it's convenient. Um, I dealt with this, with this leasing company, and I got the line and straightened out, so here's
So is it through, is it with GFI or is it with the Great America?
Well, GFI is the equipment people, and then this Great America is the financing company.
So, who's the contract through?
The financing is with Great America.
Okay, so the contract will be with Great America Financial?
Right, right.
So I move we appro, I move we approve and sign the contract with Great America Financial Services for copier lease.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and then there is also another agreement, and this is with GFI, and this is just simply agreeing to accept this equipment protect lawyers, is at no cost because we're doing the leasing agreement, so whatever.
I move we sign the contract with GFI.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. And Bill Fart left, but has he come back?
Bill.
That's our next one.
Getting coffee.
Okay, he's getting coffee.
You're up, statewide communications exercise.
Okay, what this is, the state of Missouri has put together an exercise, and this is done very rapidly, like the last, in two weeks. They are going to meet at the Sedalia State Fairgrounds. This will be an exercise of all the communications vehicles assets across the state of Missouri, so we'll see those from Cape Girardeau, from southeast Missouri, southwest Missouri, northeast, northwest coming to one place. They've asked us to, to be there with our unit, which is one of the bigger units in the state, and we're gonna set up, if allowed to go, a full field operation, we're gonna take our IST, which is the incident support team trailer, and we will set up the large tent equipment, and actually have a working EOC in the field, which is about the only one in the state that has that capability. So I just wanted to make sure that we were approved by the commission to do that, the volunteers will leave on Tuesday, the eighth, travel to Sedalia, set up all the equipment, that afternoon, exercise will be all that day Wednesday. They will then probably do an exercise that morning, hot wash and lunch, and hopefully be ready to pull out about two o'clock Thursday afternoon. So a lot of us will travel back up and demo, tear down all the equipment, put everything back on the trailers, come back, and then we'll get it all back out and set it up and clean it, so it's a pretty long process, but we have six guys that, that will take off work, so they're more glad to do that and go up and be a part of the statewide exercise. So I just wanna get the commission's approval for our equipment to go out of the county and participate. The cost would be our fuel, we're trying to find some housing right there, the local, you know, that if we take the IST trailer, then maybe they'll sleep right there in the trailer that night, or two nights. But the team will actually consist of five guys that will run Tuesday, Wednesday, Thursday, and some of them will travel back and forth just to help set up and tear down. Pretty big exercise.
Is this something that we have in the budget anywhere, Bill, or are you looking for additional funds?
Not really, I mean, it just come out of my regular fuel and, and travel budget, but it's, you know, we didn't even know anything, I don't think they knew anything about it, Chris and myself. We just kinda newly heard about this.
Do you think you'll have funds that will cover it?
I can cover the fuel and stuff like that, I think we'll be okay, a lot of guys, in the past, they've never charged anything for meals, but.
What about the housing and stuff, if we have to pay for housing, meals and stuff?
We're hoping, I can kinda circumvent that, this incident support team trailer, when we built that a few years ago with some homeland security fund, it literally has four bunks in it, once we get the equipment out, electric space heaters, air conditioners, so they can sleep in that, if they need to. Keep the cost down, so. But I was, you know, when they set this up, they had the meeting at, at Cole County Fire District, and, and we were the first one they invited, they definitely wanted Cole County's assets there, they know it's, I feel very proud of that, I mean, it's one of the bigger ones in the state, so I was pretty tickled that we were invited to it. A lot of it's gonna be the lessons learned from Joppa, because they had thirty-some different communications vehicles that are nobody to talk between each other. Highway patrol wouldn't talk to anybody else unless it's some of the things they're really going through and, and pulling out, so.
So if we did have some costs, it might be a few hundred dollars.
Yeah, I'm thinking, you know, my fuel and some cost for meals and, and some lodging, but hopefully we can kinda circumvent some of that, and go as easy as we can. Yeah, they're getting states doing it, but there's no funding available for it.
So there is or isn't lodging?
No, it isn't, no, everyone that's coming
Well, he said they were gonna try to stay in their, in their command trailer or whatever.
He just, in that last breath said that we may have some meals and lodging.
Well, I, you know, if a guy's gonna eat, yeah, I'm gonna feed him, or if they go out and eat, they keep, keep track of their receipts, so we can at least feed them, I mean, I can't drive over there every day and take McDonald's or whatever, but, and they'll eat there on, on the grounds.
I wasn't talking about the meals part, I heard that in the original part, and I was fine, I, I saw your email about it, and there was nothing that said anything about lodging, and then lodging came up today, so that's why I'm asking, is there lodging now or not?
They do have some rooms at like seventy-nine dollar, at the Boswell, I'm sitting there, there today.
But I'm not sure they'll stay in the trailer, so now we're
But if they can stay in the trailer, that's what we're gonna try to do, yeah.
Try to do, or what's what we're gonna do?
Well, I hope to, that's what we're gonna do, yeah, that's our plan, the guys stay in the trailer, they'll bunk out and sleep in the back, take their own personal stuff.
Going back and forth, yeah, they can stay in the trailer, right? I mean, I'm fine with it, is it all, we're gonna use our bunk and treat it just like the exercise?
That's our plan, to use, use the bunks, yeah, I told them, I said, hey, there's no sense in, the other plan was the state fair fire department has building, and of course, they're just now getting done with the fair, and I don't think they'll be open, but we might get them to stay there in the bunkhouse. That's closed all through the years, it's only open during the state fair, so if we do that, it's still getting the cost, so, right now, it's all we're looking at.
Look and see if both of those options.
Meal coverage and, and fuel is the only two things I'm looking at.
Okay, so we're not doing anything on lodging then, we're gonna okay meals and
Meals and fuel.
Meals and fuel, okay, cause I plan to win money when I go to the gambling boat, and it doesn't always happen. So then I gotta come back to the ATM and talk to it for more money, so you know how that's gonna be when you come up here and ask, well, we had planned to stay in this, but it was hot and have an air conditioner.
That, that is the plan, meals and fuel.
So we need seventy-nine dollars, and we need a room for each guy to have, so.
No, it wouldn't be separate.
You kept coming up lodging, that's what we planned.
Now you're putting words in my mouth, Jeff.
I move that we approve the statewide communications exercise.
Meal and fuel.
Yeah, meals and fuel.
Okay, second.
All in favor?
Our guys always keep costs very minimal, I guarantee you that.
All in favor?
Aye.
I know, Bill, but we rank everybody else across the board, all these other ranking officials, and so if we don't do that to you, I'll keep ourselves in check, then.
This is all their plan.
See, we go to training and, and Columbia, we drive back.
Hazardous materials training, come on, let's keep going.
This is some, this is something else that came up, and I, I wanted the commission to be aware of that, because I'd like approval to take one of our prime movers, which is our four packer Dodge. This class is at the Center of Domestic Preparedness in Anson, Alabama. Two years ago, the state came out with a new requirement for a certified hazardous material technician. That's an eighty-hour course, as I mentioned, our folks work every day, and the only way they can take that course is on weekends. We set that up actually to start next week, we're twelve weekends straight, and we had no takers, they canceled the class, only had two people sign up. We went online about a month or two ago and tried to get a bunch of our people in, it was very difficult to get in this class, but low and behold, four of our people got selected to go to it, that's all paid by federal government. Their meals, lodging, they're taking, again, vacation to go down there to this one week class, starts on a Sunday, goes through a Saturday. Uh, their meals, lodging, they're taking, again, vacation to go down there to this one week class. Uh, it starts on a Sunday, goes through a Saturday. I'd just like permission from the commission to let them take one of our vehicles as a drive and drive down and drive back, so we'd be out the fuel expense for the vehicle. Instead of taking their own purple vehicles and their own wear and tear on their vehicles.
I'm good with it.
I'm fine.
Me too. Motion?
You need a motion for that, Bill?
I I'm just wondering, uh, anytime we go out of the county with it, we always get the commission's approval, so I just wanted to know that.
I move we approve the travel outside the county for the hazardous materials training program.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, Bill.
Signing agreement with WM Financial Strategies on the Parkview Meadows NID.
Um, so this one's kind of moving a little bit fast, and um, anyway, Parkview Meadows Homeowners Association want to form an NID. Uh, we forward them them the Randall Drive Agreement to come up with a thousand dollars. They brought the check um, I, for the thousand. So this is to engage Joy, right, Howard, and uh, and move that forward for the petition.
Yeah.
You guys got any issues with that?
Hmm.
Nope, they put their skin in the game, so.
I like these NIDs, this is.
Okay, so I move that we approve and sign the agreement with WM Financial Strategies on the Parkview Meadows NID.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
And with that, if these two projects do run close together and the petition gets signed together, I think we do need to have Joy Howard come back down and explain to you guys maybe about incorporating those two together, pros and cons, and maybe keep them separate, you know.
All right.
So maybe if you just kind of keep me.
I suspect, as soon as they get the information, they're gonna have a petition, so.
Okay.
Should we have a petition on the other Parkview Meadows?
I don't know. I haven't heard from Tony. Tony, fair enough.
Approval of change order Pioneer Trails Safe Routes to School Project.
This is for subgrade stabilization on the Rainbow Drive reconstruction portion of the project. Um, this year's been exceptionally bad with subgrade issues. We've had it on our stormwater job. This one in particular, it's old Missouri Route One, and due to the change in grade, we got below the original gravel surface and got into some clays that would not dry out, and so we ended up having to take the whole subgrade out and replace it with the shot rock. Um, MoDOT has approved this change order since it is a um federally funded or partially federally funded project, and so everything has run through MoDOT with their approval, and in order for the commission to, or in order for the county to be able to pay the additional, uh, the county would have to approve this, or the county commission would have to approve this change order as well. So attached to the back is a copy of the the MoDOT approval. So we would recommend that the county commission approve this change order in the amount of fifty-nine thousand, seven hundred and sixty-four dollars and fifty cents.
Is this something that MoDOT will reimburse us for partially, or?
They would if.
But?
If we had full federal funding for the project. We only have two hundred and fifty thousand, and the project cost is more than that, and so in essence, it's it's all our additional cost.
Okay.
So this is on top of fifty-nine thousand given this.
Yeah. It's not good, um, but I don't know. We've had a lot of issues with subgrade problems. It seems like it kind of comes and goes depending on where you're at. We had some in the, we had, I believe, a quarter of the square yardage in the contract to replace anyway, and it it just went to heck on us, so.
Well, we drove, that's out in the same area as Business Fifty that.
Yeah.
Had problems underneath of that, too.
Yeah, well.
It's not like we didn't see this company.
Well, what what was?
West side of Cole County is just problems.
Exactly.
Well.
No.
Probably a record amount of rainfall. It didn't help this either.
That didn't help. Just everything stacked against us, and you know, what we're finding on these old roads that we're going in and having to reconstruct, especially old, old roads, they were built basically just using the topsoil that was there and then put material on top, and then over time, as as these things are overlaid and everything, they do okay in their existing situation, but then you get to changing and working it and building a new road and expecting heavier traffic and construction traffic, it just, the subgrade does not hold up. Uh, we had on the Woodward Lake Project on Angeli Avenue, we had to go in and replace a whole thing on that. That was a little different situation. Um, subdivision built back in the seventies, and we we are pretty sure that that was an old ravine or gully or something that was filled in with tree stumps and trees and debris and everything, and they built the road on top of that, and we're pulling out.
Trees and stumps.
Trees and stumps and junk. It's terrible, so. It's just kind of the nature of the beast with these types of projects, these reconstruction of these older areas. You just never know what you're gonna get into. You try to estimate using the best judgment you can, but you don't wanna, you know, go in and estimate everything coming out because typically, it's not everything. You just get into some cases where you do have to replace it all in in certain areas. It's just without doing a soil, maybe in in the future, I could talk with Larry and Larry about it, but we might want to go ahead and do geotech studies on these just to get a recommendation on what we should do. It's an additional cost, but you can fine tune your bid quantities a little bit better. Maybe it will recoup that cost in a better bid price on some things, so. Just an idea, but we'll look at that going forward on future projects.
How much of that was covered by the Safe Routes to School? Half million of it, or did we have a match?
Quarter of a million is the the grant amount, and our match is all the additional cost for the whole project.
Okay.
So I don't really have a question on this, but um, so as we move forward with these NIDs, how much subgrade we got in those?
Well.
The Randall Drive, we probably, I know Bob Gilbert's looked at that for your art, uh, design costs and stuff. The one out in uh, Parkview, I think they're, the subgrade, there's gonna be some drainage issues, I think we're gonna find just due to sprinklers and stuff like that. Uh, there's most of those yards that have sprinklers in the yards, and I think that's part of the issue.
Perception might be, subgrade.
Yeah, coming off the route tape, there, I know there's some down there, uh, because that's where we got crossways with the developer right off the get-go, goes down there in that bottom.
I mean, we're gonna have, I mean, 'cause we kind of gotta give them a number.
Right.
For that, so I mean, I I just want to make sure our number is rock solid and we don't come back and it's.
Little, little bit of the issue there is, you know, I'm not sure it's right that they, that we be the ones responsible for giving them the number because they're the ones petitioning more or less to do the project and us take it in. You know, we can only go on what we got there. Part of the engineering on the Parkview Meadows would be to do a more in-depth study with an engineering company to see what actually needs to be replaced, and in that case, since you're taking out and replacing and bringing it up to to good condition for us to take it, we have to approve everything that comes out or doesn't come out. And so there's a little bit of involvement with us as far as setting the project up, but as far as, and that's.
So how do they, how do they come up with the number then?
Well, I don't, I don't, the whole theory behind the NIDs, I mean, you're voting on a number that's an estimate, and you can't do the engineering, or you know, unless you pay to do the engineering ahead of time, you're really kind of voting on um, an estimate, and you just have to figure some contingencies in there. You know, we think we're pretty good, but you know, I don't want it to come back on me or the county that, well, that your estimate was too low because we're just estimating off of something that we don't know everything about, and some of that built out there, we didn't know everything about. So there's just a lot of unknowns.
Well, like we've told the landowners and stuff, you know, uh, none of the stormwater has been cameras. You know, they're aware of that, that there may be additional costs there, so.
In the case of the Randall Drive, Bartlett West did an estimate on that one. Um, and they kind of did some work upfront at no, I mean, they haven't recouped any of that cost, you know, yeah, so.
And I'm just trying to understand that, you know, if I was a landowner out there and, you know, and they they petitioned me and they said it's gonna cost you five thousand dollars, and now it comes back and it's seven thousand dollars or whatever, I mean, well.
Things can be, it's like building a house. You don't know if you're gonna have to chip rock, or if you're gonna have to, you know, you don't have enough compaction or whatever. You may have stuff, you add your.
Everything.
You just hope not.
Right.
Again, I think as for Joy and Tony probably need to talk, you know, we talked about funding the original construction and letting them sell one bond at the end. Uh, that does put the county liability there, and that's something that we, you know, I pointed out, I know before, but you know, if they sell the bond, it's still on, if they sell a construction bond, it's on them to complete it. If we finance that construction, there's another whole issue. You know, if they bond it and don't have sufficient funds, it's up to them to go back to and petition again to increase it. Where it is, we've got money in the game, we're kind of, they vote for second petition down if it doesn't take cost, and we're on hold for that money that was spent that day, you know.
Okay.
We, um, every discussion we've had with him, we've said this is just strictly an estimate based on our best guess at what you got out there, and you know, a more thorough cost estimate for construction, for bidding would need to be done. But you know, those things, I mean, we we think we're pretty good. You know, we use prices that should reflect current trends, but if they bid this thing in, let's say, May of next year, that's a big difference than bidding in January where contractors can get a better idea.
Right.
So it's, a lot of it falls on when they bid it and, you know, what what the economy's doing, what MoDOT's doing. There's so many different factors that come into what kind of price you're gonna get when you bid something like that, so.
Sure, we still got this Pioneer Trails issue.
Oh, sorry.
We're gonna go ahead.
Yeah, I know, I know. I got, kind of got sidetracked, but you know, I mean, as we.
I'd like to get an update on on Lower Bottom Road, too. I'm getting a lot of calls, so, but I thought, do we want to act on this?
Yeah, that's that East End problem, right?
Do we want to act on this?
Bazinga. Got me. Okay, on this one for Pioneer Trails, what did we have in there for contingency? Is this is all overage?
Uh, we had contingency in there because we had um, had estimated pretty high in our budget, and it came in about a hundred thousand under. So we have enough in our budget to cover this extra.
Okay, that's where I was gonna go with that. Where's this put us at?
We're still okay on our budget.
Well, that's, I'd give the engineer a pat on the back on that one, right?
Give the.
Because we'd rather it look bad to start with than come in under, so.
Yeah.
Okay.
Yeah.
There's potential for that, yeah, uh, they coming in on what we originally estimated.
Trying to end on a good note here.
It's all good, it's all good.
Yep. Yes, I know. The window is ajar.
Okay.
All right, did we have a motion on this one yet or not?
No.
I hadn't made one yet.
Okay, I remember where we were at. You start talking about Lower Bottom, Sam.
Well, I was, I said, I want to talk about that, but I said we still got this issue before, so.
I don't have any more questions on this one, then?
I move we approve the change order for Pioneer Trails Safe Routes to School Project.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, now Lower Bottom Road.
That's not on the agenda, Sam. What is wrong with it?
Other issues has come forward, I mean.
Had you talked to him since, okay?
I talked to him, Eric actually talked to him last week, but I.
They've got it bored. They've got it bored in there, so.
What they're looking at now, they're actually, uh, with the results of what they found so far, it appears, uh, that if they can find a borrower in that area, we might actually be able to go back with natural materials. Um, that, what that means is they've got to find a good clay borrower. Now, since there's going to be federal funds involved in it, and it also means that we're gonna have to do an armpit impact on the area, make sure there's not any um, Indian artifacts there or any historic, we've got to go through all those stuff to do that. Uh, I've talked with Doug Otter down in that area, um, they've requested possibly trying to put in something temporary just during harvest season, uh, so they don't have to get out on drop B. That's something that we're gonna try and meet with a consultant this week and discuss that possibility. I have concerns as far as liability issues that opens for the county, you know, what if somebody tries to go through there and it continues to slide? You know, we can still leave the road closed, but we build a temporary road, somebody gets out, builds a barricade and drives off. You know, it would have to slide another two or three feet, you know, are we liable then for, you know, constructing that temporary road and per se?
Where'd Jill go?
I don't know. But that's issues, we need to talk to consultant and come back to you with it and see if you want to go. I understand the landowners down there, um, some of them have moved, put them back and forth, and one business actually works on farm equipment, they want to uh, make sure that they're not out on drop B anymore than necessary.
Just tell us yes or no, Jill.
What's up?
Say no.
I was just talking about Lower Bottom.
Down Lower Bottom. Uh, we've been requested by at least one of the landowners to build a temporary road over the uh, area that slid.
Okay, let's back up. Is that that road that fell apart?
Right.
Okay.
Yeah. Better build a temporary road, and like I was telling them, I have a little bit of concern, uh, what kind of liability issues that opens up for the county. If, uh, we would build a temporary road, and when we left it, it was okay, but during the night, one night, it slides a little further and somebody goes out there, builds a barricade and tries to use it as an embrace road.
What liability do we have now? They can move the barricade now and go through there, so. I think if they move the barricade there on their own.
I agree.
But if we build a road for the farmer to use, I'd be more concerned about if it starts to sink and their tractor has tons and tons of silage or what have you on there, then it thumps over, then are we gonna be liable? Or do, to use this road, you have to sign this release, and but if you see where they have to go to go around that?
If you're gonna build something that doesn't have the stability of a regular road, and you're letting people use it as a regular road, I mean, I don't know if you can limit the speed limit to ten miles an hour or something, but I mean, you're gonna have some kind of liability there.
Right, and that's, that's my concern.
All right, let's just see what we can come up with and.
I was gonna say, let us, let us meet with consultant. Uh, Eric and Bruce talked last week when I was out for a couple days. And we'll try and get a meeting set up and and try and see if we can get you some more firm information. I know they were continuing to look at possible borrow sites and stuff, so we'll bring it back to you, because that fairness they have.
Yeah, okay. Okay.
Anything else?
All right, there's. I got something for other business.
Okay.
And we need to talk about this on site wastewater treatment systems. I don't know if y'all have been involved with any of that stuff. We've never really had any variances that I remember. I think Mark went back and looked, and last time was two thousand and eleven. I don't know where the bylaws are. Did you email those to me, Christie?
I have. There is no bylaws. There's just a section in the ordinance that talks about.
Okay, I did look at that.
Okay, there is no bylaw.
Well, we just gotta figure out what we're gonna do with that, because if somebody comes up and has a variance or wants to try to do something different with their lagoon, we need to be able to address it. Chris has his book that says it's supposed to be done a certain way. If they want to go and have a variance, we need to have the board. Currently, we've got three people on there.
Well, technically, we don't have anybody on there because they've never been appointed by you that we can find documentation of.
Well.
And I think we have that kind of agenda for next week, next week, yeah.
But have we gone back to, I mean, when was that board formed? Two thousand and five?
It started in two thousand, uh, when.
Two thousand, so we looked at all the minutes to see if they have been appointed or not?
Yeah, we've just.
They may have been appointed at some point.
Yes, sure, they could have been. I didn't know even what year it is.
That's when it started, that's when the state mandated new on sites or regulations.
Okay, so they may have been appointed. I don't know if we've gone back to look as far as two thousand.
I didn't know.
We can report everybody.
We couldn't find anything at that time.
That's fine, but.
Yeah.
Right now, we have the question, and we've got somebody that's asking for a variance and says, well, I've been told you don't have a variance board, that I can't do a variance. Uh, we've done it this way before with Mark and Carl and David were here, so we've got different people up there now. We just got to address how we're gonna do it, so I told the other person that we're gonna appoint him for sure next Tuesday.
Right.
And Mark's double checking with Bob and Bob, and then we have Rob and Ian.
Rob Morrison and Ian Saxton.
Ian's already filled out.
And Rob has, too, I sent today.
Rob has, too?
Yes. And Bob Hinchis has, too. We brought it over today.
And then the other question is, who's gonna post the meetings because for the planning?
Jill says this, this needs to be posted.
Okay.
I don't disagree.
So.
But that's a part of the conversation that we're having now, so.
Right.
Okay, when we get to, who's gonna run those, who's gonna have control of those, because Planning Commission meetings, Public Works controls those, so.
We can do that.
If y'all can do that, and are you fine with the five that we have for appointing to the board? I don't know if Sam, if you know any of them, or Chris?
Yeah, I'm, I'm fine. I think we have, we're gonna approve two of them, what, next week?
What, we're gonna, we're gonna point all five next week?
Yeah, and next week, and then we can-
Because technically, they were only supposed to be on, if they were appointed in two thousand, they were only supposed to be on for three-year terms, so their terms were expired a long time ago.
We might have to do some staggering, but you can still put them, even if you, yeah.
That's all in the ordinance, how that works.
Yeah, so that's-
We will.
It's all laid out.
I'll have that laid out for you to approve on Tuesday.
So, and I'll have the application filled out?
We have three out of the five now.
Hi, on, uh, Bob Reed, I did not receive his back.
Right.
I explained to him the process that we were doing in, at applying to be on this board, and I had sent him the, the application, but I haven't heard back from him. He had some questions for me regarding when meetings would be, if he would even be able to attend with conflicts with his job. And I said to you, that's, that's a decision he had to make, so I, I can't confirm for sure that-
So, what do the bylaws say, or the ordinance say? When is it monthly?
No, it just says that they'll meet when there's a variance request.
Because the planning commission meets once a month. That's all it is.
It just says that if we get a variance request, they'll need to-
This is a review board.
Right.
It's not really a commission. It's, it's-
That's what the planning commission is, too, is we review the plaques and we approve them. We have variance requests and we review them, and this would be the same, I would put this in the same boat.
Yeah.
Yeah, they don't review any, this board doesn't review any of our permit applications or anything like that. Their main purpose is just to review and make determinations on variances.
We don't review all the permits that-
Okay.
The Public Works. This is just the plaques for under five acres, I think.
Okay.
Which, for whatever reason, they have to be approved by the planning commission, and I'll even take those off the table and say variances.
This is just variances.
What the planning commission does, so if you have a lot and you have a length-to-width ratio that's not within, uh, the ordinances, then we consider, you know, well, it makes sense to be able to do this, just because they have a really long lot. And these rules aren't set up for those kind of instances, so that's why you have to have the board review or to look at the variances. There's, you know, we got the little, I don't know, honestly, it's kind of a sense that some of the things don't fit in certain areas and we-
Well, next week, when we're approving this one, let's-
Fine if you willingly violate the sunshine law.
Yeah, let's, let's, uh-
I'm not saying to violate any sunshine law. I'm saying we need to get this board together, because I've-
Well, but-
No, no, no. I'm talking, this needs to be posted on the agenda, and the sunshine law requires that.
I'm fine with that. I'm, I don't know what we're talking about. I'm not talking about anything we shouldn't be talking about right now.
It's not posted on the agenda.
What's not on the agenda?
This discussion.
I've got it under other issues that have come before the commission this day.
Yeah, but you could put everything under the sun under other issues.
That's what I'm doing.
If, if we're gonna be, if we're gonna be appointing these people next week, why don't we, why don't we just-
Because I'm trying to bring the discussion up of where this came from.
My point was that, no, that's not permissible on me.
Then sue me. I'm in a suing mood today, suing. I'm bringing it up because I've spent countless freaking hours on the phone about this crap in the last two weeks. I wanna get it taken care of now. It shouldn't have somebody trying to get into their house, not be able to get in their house for two months because we don't have a damn meeting or have anybody appointed. So now I'm just saying, I'm getting short with it. I want it done now. There's no reason why governments should drag its feet, so if we're gonna wait till Monday, we can, I'll just tell them to give y'all a call. I'm good with it. I'm done. Tuesday, I'm sorry.
I've, I talked to him, too.
Me, too.
I'm done. Said my piece.
Tuesday, so.
I mean, if we need to have a meeting tomorrow, we can post an agenda right now. I mean, we got twenty-four hours.
I said my piece.
That's up to you, but, yeah, the homeowner is very anxious. I don't know what happened in the, in the few months when he started planning his house and why he's waited to this point till it's built to get his sewage system in, but now it has been two months because of the way the process was followed. He came to us with a variance request, not a permit application, so our staff started over with him with a permit application and found a suitable system.
Started over. He had to, he had to approve to do it one way, but instead of costing six thousand, if he does another way, he can do two thousand. He's offered to put a septic in front of the lagoon, uh, talking about other ones. I've had other people complaining about it, too, saying there's, you know, it's not the way that, I'm not saying Chris is doing it wrong. Chris is doing it different than what, uh, David and Carl did it, so now we gotta get it figured out how we're gonna have the board review, so we need to do it ASAP.
Okay, well, if we're gonna appoint these people, we've gotta appoint them first, and then they still gotta be able to review this application, right, before we can do it, even if we would do a meeting, well, you'd have to do it tomorrow afternoon, or say do it Thursday.
I think everything's fine with appointing them Tuesday. I just wanna talk about where, we don't have any bylaws or anything that says when they're gonna meet, who's the chair of it. There's, there's no rules right now. It's just a loose committee that's gonna review it.
Right.
So.
Well, let's appoint them. Let's get that stuff done. Appoint a chairman, call a meeting, get it done.
Try to get it done as quickly as we can, 'cause I, I-
If you appoint them Tuesday morning, can we have them have their first meeting Tuesday night if we post it on Monday?
Sure.
Yeah, I think that'd be great.
Twenty-four hour notice.
Okay, well, we'll get the meeting posted. As soon as they're appointed, we'll have a meeting, and we'll try to get some bylaws set up for them ahead of time. That way they can approve their bylaws and look at that variance request as soon as possible on Tuesday.
I don't have approved the bylaws. Do we approve the bylaws, or do they? They don't approve the bylaws.
Eric done approved. The bylaws are approved already, right?
There is no bylaws.
I mean, the ordinance-
The ordinance is approved, but there's no bylaws, but I know.
See, that's what I'm talking about.
You have to, you have to approve their bylaws.
Right now, it's messed up more than a damn soup sandwich, and we don't have a clue what's going on with it, and that's why I wanted to get on top of this. What the ordinance says we need to do, the bylaws, because Chris is still waiting out there, and we've got other ones that are questioning about it, too. I said, "Look, they, the health department's doing what they're supposed to do. Chris is doing what he's supposed to do. He's got rules." Okay, how do you circumvent it or get the variance done? I don't know. I've never run across this before.
Right, me neither.
So.
Yeah, it's never been an issue before, but, I mean, I-
It's nothing that you all did.
I understand. I, I agree we need to do it properly, and-
I've never had one of these in eight years come up, so, and that's why I'm getting short with it, because if it was my house, I'd be ticked, so.
Oh.
We can move on and appoint them Tuesday and work on the bylaws in the meantime.
Yeah, well, we'll try to, yeah, we'll try to have bylaws, too, have everything for you to approve on Tuesday.
We're moving as fast as we can.
That way they can meet Tuesday night.
And I'm fine with that, but I'm also saying that other issues are other issues.
Would you like to have the member-
If I'm wrong on that, sue me.
Would you like to have them here Tuesday when you appoint them, or not?
No, they don't have to be here. I don't think so.
Just great.
No, that we have, that we have their, we have their, their application.
Right.
So, none of ours are gonna come to the meeting to be appointed.
Okay.
No, that's just one more thing now.
They've got their application.
Are they appointed for two years, three years?
We're gonna have that all laid out on, on Tuesday.
Okay.
We have our ideas, but I don't have it on paper yet.
Okay.
Alright.
Let's do that.
Okay.
I have some stuff for you.
Thank you.
I move we go into closed session pursuant to Section six-ten-point-oh-two-one-sub-three for personnel issues. Do you have something else? Sorry, Debbie.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Hold on. Debbie, did you have something else before we vote on this?
We have a financial statement that we have to put in the paper. It's the same financials that are in our financial statements already.
No, I'm just asking, do we need to do something, because we got a motion on the floor. We can't, I'm just asking, do we need to rescind our motion and?
We need to resign.
Can we do it after the closed session? Okay.
You're welcome.
Really?
Thanks, Christie.
So, okay.
We got this closed session motion on the floor.
Right.
Okay.
Um, but what, does Debbie need something done, or can we do it when we come out?
Yeah, we can do it when we come, yeah, we'll do it.
I was trying to figure out, if we can wait, then let's just do it, otherwise we can rescind.
Aye.